Yeah, no. Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Skokie Village Board for Monday, April the first. No April Fools. 2019. This evening, we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Cub Scout Pack eighty-five. Gentlemen?
Will the onions please rise? Colonel God, pause. The color, colors, wait, colors, colors. Okay. Please join us, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Colonel God retreat. Colonel God dismiss. Amen.
Thank you. The meeting will come to order and the clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Roberts?
Here.
Trustee Sutker?
Here.
Trustee Elrich?
Here.
Trustee Bromberg?
Here.
Trustee Klein?
Here.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Here.
Mayor Vendusen?
Here. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is approval of this evening's consent agenda. A motion is in order. Trustee Klein, seconded by trustee Gray Keeler. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody would like to have removed? If not, I'll call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Elrich?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Vendusen?
Aye. The motion passes. I would like to point out, just for the record at least, by virtue of this evening's consent agenda, we have enacted a proclamation regarding the Complete Count Committee for the 2020 census. The manager has appointed Steve Marciani, a senior planner in our department, to head up our census committee. And I would urge anybody who can be of help to please volunteer. The census is one of the most important things that's done, and it's one of, but it's one of the very least in detail-oriented things that happens. And it has a great influence on our future for the next ten years. A lot of money that comes into the village through formula is done on a per-data basis according to the census. That is set. But in addition to that, I would also like to announce, and the village board is well aware of this, that we have joined in an amicus brief before the Supreme Court, dealing with the census. In the brief, we, along with some other municipalities and states, express our concern about the wording of one of the questions in the census. It's received great deal of publicity. It was argued before the Supreme Court recently. And basically, the Bureau of the Census, the Department of Commerce, is proposing that there be a question asking people what their naturalization and permanent resident status is. This is very troubling. The Constitution points out very simply, all people in the country on a specific date are to be counted. The Constitution does not make any qualifications. And our concern, as it's expressed in the brief, is that this will suppress the count. As I mentioned just a minute ago, it sets for the next ten years, a lot of the formula money that comes to municipalities and the states. But in addition to that, it's very important for the redistricting of members of Congress. And in Illinois, we are in danger of possibly losing two members of Congress. That would be very devastating to our state because it affects the electoral vote in the country. So we have joined in the amicus brief, and I don't know if John or Michael have anything they would like to add.
I can, I can just add quickly that this brief that we participated in and had the opportunity to read before it was filed, both to see that it paralleled the mayor's and the board's wishes, but also to, to give our own thoughts as to its content, was written by a law firm in New York, because this is, the case actually is against the state of New York itself, is extremely well-written. And the brief, in terms of the amicus brief that we've joined in, that we reviewed, now covers one hundred and fifty-two, and they emphasize bipartisan elected officials, county, cities, and the name a large number of states that have participated, including Illinois. And what is, as the mayor has already said, to a large degree, but to be a little more specific, what's at stake is estimated to be about nine hundred billion dollars in federal funding. And it's not just the dollars, but some of the programs connected to federal census-taking. The allocation depends on the population you have. And so it was determined that the addition of a citizenship question to the census will result in undercounting of already hard-to-count populations. The idea being that those being faced with a question about citizenship might be less helpful or less in the area of participating in the census-taking, resulting in undercounts. Because then, some states will have a higher percentage of, of what you might consider a hard-to-count population, than other states would, in effect, get an up-count in their census. And tremendous resources, not just dollars, but programs and staffing will shift. And we feel that certainly, any community of diversity like ours would stand with us to say that it's an inappropriate place to place such a question and such a burden on a population.
John?
Just in closing, today's significant because it's exactly one year from the day that we're all counted. And so we're kicking off the importance of the census today, April first, as we look one year from today to all be counted.
And I see Howard Meyer from the Skokie Chamber. Howard may not be aware yet, but we're going to be calling on him to help us. We may even assign him to a census district to go out and do some counting. The next item, though, is a matter of celebration. As many of you may be aware, this year kicks off the fiftieth year celebration of the creation of Oakton Community College. It's particularly relevant to the village of Skokie because it was, at least as legend has it, created in the kitchen of a Skokian, a gentleman by the name of Ray Hartstein. I don't know how many of you ever had the pleasure of getting to know Ray, but I don't use the term lightly when they say "a gentleman." He epitomized gentlemanlessness. He, in his kitchen at least, as the story goes, was sitting around with some friends and neighbors, and they were talking about the need for sort of an intermediate opportunity for education. And Ray said, "Well, why don't we create a community college?" Little did he know the amount of work it would take, as I'll recite in just a minute. The achievement, though, is monumental. Following in that tradition, I would point out, she is with us this evening, Ann and Howard Tennis are both graduates of Oakton Community College. And Ann and Howard both have served on the board of Oakton Community College. And Ann, congratulations, and thank you for your service. And so I would like to read the proclamation. We have with us this evening, the president of Oakton Community College. So I'll formally make the presentation to Dr. Joanne Smith in just a minute. Whereas, created by the residents of District 535, Oakton Community College has served as a local center for post-secondary education for more than three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-eight students through credit instruction, awarding twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-three credentials since its inception fifty years ago, and continues to serve more than ten thousand students each year through a variety of academic, personal enrichment, and arts programming. And whereas the members of the first governing body of the college's Board of Trustees were sworn in on June twenty-fifth, nineteen sixty-nine. And whereas, Oakton Community College enrolled its first class of eight hundred and thirty-two students in the fall of nineteen seventy, and leased manufacturing facilities on Oakton Street in Morton Grove, and is now located on campuses in displaying Skokie and remote sites throughout the district. And whereas, the one hundred and nine square mile district now encompasses nearly five hundred thousand residents, ten public high schools, and more than twenty-eight thousand businesses. Whereas, Oakton Community College offers high-quality educational opportunities at affordable tuition rates for all residents of District 535. From associate's degrees to certificate programs to adult education, lifelong learning, and dual-credit options in high school, and whose students range at age from eight to more than ninety years old, and who come from all backgrounds and all walks of life. And whereas the college initially offered five degrees and certificates, it now offers more than eighty areas of study and one thousand five hundred continuing education courses. Whereas, Oakton Community College provides workforce development and economic development opportunities and adds immeasurably to the local economy. And whereas, all Oakton Community College faculty, professional support staff, and administrators begin celebrating the college's fiftieth anniversary on its founding day, June twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen. Now therefore, I, George Van Duzen, Mayor of the Village of Skokie, do hereby proclaim June twenty-fifth through June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, as the year of Oakton Community College in Skokie, and urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the tremendous influence Oakton Community College has had on Skokie. Through its ease of access to the residents of the village, it has provided for each of us an opportunity to enjoy continuing education and training, thus improving the quality of life here. And I might say, it's my pleasure to teach at Oakton Community College. I won't tell anybody how long, but it's been a couple years. And I've, I've been in the history and political science department. And my grandson is a student at Oakton, and I can attest to what a great school it is. Not because of me, but because of the faculty that it has attracted over the years. It's a first-rate faculty, and our students go on to all types of colleges across the country. And it's a marvelous institution. And I would like to welcome Dr. Smith, the president of the school, to the podium.
I want to thank you for this proclamation and let you know how important the village of Skokie is to the college. This is the place where one of our campuses is. We are so proud to have a trustee from Skokie and to have Mayor Vendusen as one of our most highly popular political science and history faculty members. So the village of Skokie plays a really important role in the college. And thank you very much for honoring us. And we hope you will join us in the celebrations. It will be a year-long celebration, starting on June twenty-fifth, but continuing for a year. So look forward to information and ways that you can be involved as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is another matter of celebration. And I would like to introduce Dr. A. Michael Drackler, chairman of our Board of Health, and Dr. Catherine Canard, the director of health for the village.
Good evening. We have a crowd, because this is for our ninth annual Public Health Partners in Excellence Awards. So we have, I have with me Bruce Jones, who's the environmental health supervisor, Lori Kaplan, one of our animal control officers, Sue Reisberg, our personal health supervisor, and David Clef, public health analyst. This is one of our favorite nights of the year, when we get to present these awards. It's because the Skokie Health Department could not provide critical services without the cooperation and assistance of many individuals and organizations. Each year, the Health Department and Board of Health recognize two entities that have provided exceptional support of public health initiatives in the community with the Public Health Partners in Excellence Awards. This year, our first awardee is the Chicago Exotics Animal Hospital. And we're lucky to have with us here, Dr. Susan Horton, Dr. Stephanie Moy, and Lamar Gatineau, office manager. We are giving this award to thank you for supporting the Skokie Animal Control Program by accepting unclaimed stray pets that are not dogs or cats and finding these animals homes. Not everyone is set up to care for a chicken, a turtle, a rabbit, or a ball python at the drop of a hat. But Chicago Exotics staff can always handle the challenge. Beyond pets, Chicago Exotics veterinarians accept all of our sick, orphaned, and injured wildlife that have a chance at rehabilitation recovery. Your doors are always open to an animal in need, and we're grateful that staff have even driven over to the office outside of normal business hours in order to help. During 2018, Chicago Exotics provided shelter and care for one hundred and eighteen exotic pets and wildlife in need at no cost to the village after the animals were rescued in the community by Skokie Animal Control Officers. I will say, every year, I ask staff who they think is most deserving of the award, and the animal control officers unanimously selected Chicago Exotics. And by the way, their hospital is located on Dempster Street in Skokie. So thank you for providing crucial services for our community, and we look forward to many continued years of collaboration. Dr. Horton and your staff, if you want to come up?
Doctor, did I hear you say bald python?
Yes, you did.
I want to, I would like the person on the staff who rounded up the python to please raise your hand. That is singularly brave.
I don't want to meet them after, I also live here. This is a great community.
The ball python was a lost pet. They're actually very tame, from my understanding.
They are very tame.
That's right.
They're the puppy dogs of the snake world.
Puppy dogs of the snake world. There you have it. So we found it on the street and...
I'm sorry.
And they, they helped us take care of it.
Just the thought scares me.
Thank you. And thanks for being with us tonight. Our next award is, we are giving to Howard Meyer, Executive Director of the Skokie Chamber of Commerce and Industry. With Howard tonight is Board President John Tursis, immediate past president Joyce Schaefer, and board members Scott Shaler, Arn Tratt, and Ruben Howard. We're giving this award to thank you for your many years of supporting public health efforts to reduce the use of tobacco products in Skokie. As you know, tobacco use remains the top preventable cause of death in the village, beginning at age thirty-five years. Laws limiting access to and use of tobacco products are an effective means of decreasing the negative impact of tobacco on our community. We're grateful that from the 2003 ban on smoking in workplaces and enclosed public spaces, to the 2018 increase in the age to sell or purchase tobacco products to twenty-one years, the chamber has joined us and spoken in favor. This included urging the Illinois Chamber of Commerce and other municipal chambers to adopt Tobacco Twenty-One, which is critical to controlling the surge of youth becoming addicted to nicotine through vaping. I will add that I learned this morning that Governor Pritzker will be signing on April seventh at Loyola Medical Center in Maywood, Illinois, the Illinois Tobacco Twenty-One law. So I want to say congratulations to all involved, including the Board of Health, Chamber of Commerce, and the Village of Skokie trustees, and our mayor, for supporting Tobacco Twenty-One, because it's taken all of us to achieve this long goal. So thank you, and if you want to come up, we'll get our photo. Thank you.
And I would like to take just a moment to emphasize what Dr. Canard just said about the chamber's support. Was a long road, very winding, and two steps forward, one step backwards in getting Tobacco Twenty-One passed. But it could not have been done, we could not have gotten the support of our local legislators if it wasn't that Dr. Canard personally, but also had the backing of our chamber. That is always one of the questions you're asked. What does the chamber think? So I want to personally thank Howard and the chamber for signing on. We will never know how many lives are, will be saved by this, because hopefully it will divert a lot of young people from taking up the habit. But rest assured, you have saved lives, and we're grateful to you for that. Doctor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I might point out before the meeting, I was talking with Dr. Drackler and the people from the exotic pet, and one of the people pointed out that Dr. Drackler was her doctor. So, inner Skokie resident at the same time. So, Dr. Drackler, thank you.
I'm like the snake's doctor.
Don't, let's, we'll move on from the python. I'm petrified of snakes, that's all I can tell you. Next item on the agenda is report of our village manager, John Lockerbie.
Thank you, Mayor Vendusen and Village Board. Good evening to everyone. Items A and B of my report were approved under tonight's consent agenda, and that completes my report.
Thank you. Next item is report of our corporation council, Michael Lord.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. Good evening, everyone, as they exit the room. Item A is an ordinance which was on the consent agenda at the beginning of this evening's meeting, was adopted at that time. Item B is an ordinance which is up for first reading tonight. Due to several, several recent court cases, most notably the United States Supreme Court case Reed versus the town of Gilbert, the corporation's council's office and the community development department have been in the process of an intensive review of the village's sign code. This arduous process is ongoing, and it will take several more months to complete. But of particular focus tonight is the growing development use and the reduced cost of outdoor electronic displays and LED panels that are being used on general signage. There's a great interest by the commercial and retail businesses, as well as organizations, schools, and other governmental entities, to use these communication devices. Therefore, we are expediting this part of the sign code tonight. This technology, as it's being developed, necessitates clearer regulation, because outdoor electronic displays and LED panels could potentially create distractions for drivers by emitting disturbing levels and intensities of light, especially at night, as well as the moving images themselves being distracting. We also know that in some areas of the village, if not regulated, the intensity of the light at night might be disturbing to residents. At the same time, the village seeks to make this technology and signage available to our businesses, organizations, schools, and governmental entities. And that is the purpose of the ordinance that's in front of you tonight. We believe it balances both the introduction of this technology widely into the community, and still provides control for the safety of motorists and the comfort of residents.
Are there any comments or questions? Are there any comments or questions? This is first reading. It will return to the board on Tax Day, ironically, April 15th, 2019. Are there any, Trustee Roberts?
Just because we haven't addressed this for a while, I just wanted to kind of refresh my memory. So, Michael, does, this, this ordinance will apply both to public as well as private electronic signs?
Correct. The, the concept is that it would apply to any LED panels or electronic signage anywhere in the village, including schools and governmental entities.
And I know that it has a phrase or a portion of it that deals with how long the messages shall be up, and it says that they should not change any more frequently than 20 seconds. And I know there was a little bit of a debate between, was it kind of talked about at both the Appearance and the Economic Development? Could you give us maybe a gist of what the feel was and how did you arrive at the 20 seconds?
Sure. There were discussions, first of all, internally within the, within Village Hall, among staff, and, and the range of suggestions ranged anywhere between, at one point, once a day or once every 12, 12 hours, to then, as, as it became more prevalent in, in the communities around us, to shorter time periods. And we were at one point in some of the discussions at 30 seconds, I believe, when it went in front of the, particularly the Appearance Commission, and they, on their own instigation and discussion, came up with the 20-second delineation. We find no particular data that says any particular amount of time really stands at this time as optimal, it's developing in that area. And so the feeling among staff was to go with the Appearance Committee's recommendation and go to 20 seconds and to move from there. But what's key is that you also see there that staff, in particular, in trying to develop it, did, even though it can change every 20 seconds, it's static in its presentation. So we, we are trying to avoid flashing and streaks, which are probably more problematic than how often it transitions from one image to another.
And the Economic Development Commission, does the business community generally support this approach that we're taking with the ordinance?
Yeah, first of all, they're pleased to have it come along on, on any terms. But yes, I've been twice to the Economic Development Commission over the last year or so with this, most notably last week, and they are happy and pleased to see it come along, and they understand that some, some governance needs to be on it, but they're, they're really pleased that also it is, in its definition, forward-looking, so that as technology changes, we believe we've drafted a description that will continue to be useful to the community. And that's why the definition is somewhat lengthy.
And then, just finally, just to finish up, if I could, in terms of resident complaints, in terms, I know the ordinance deals with kind of the intensity or the wattage of the sign. Have we had many complaints, or with this ordinance in place, we can tell residents that if it's in a, boarding on a residential community, that there's some attention in the ordinance to controlling the brightness or the illumination?
Yes, there, there's several measurements that come into play now with the new technology, whether you talk about lumens or other measuring factors. It is in the ordinance, and in particular, we differentiate between daytime and nighttime. It's the nighttime that becomes the most problematic. Daytime, your eyes are adjusted in a, in a particular way. Nighttime especially, if it's across the street from you, it, it, it can be disturbing. And so we have, we believe, struck the right qualities in terms of light emission, and it can always be adjusted. I believe there were one or two complaints that dealt with intensity from some bright signs in general that weren't even necessarily LED, and, and Pete Pyer and, and the staff within the Community Development, within the Planning Department and so forth have done a lot to respond to those individuals. The role that Pete's department has had with the Legal Department is a, it's really a great example of interdisciplinary interaction within Village Hall that we're very proud of, but also may explain why it's taking us months to get through it until we can periodically find time to sit down and, and really find solutions to these issues. But yes, we, we are setting into this ways of dealing with potential residential, residence complaints. We don't think we'll get any at this point.
Trustee Sutker.
So Trustee Roberts asked about the economic development and businesses. I'm curious if any government bodies weighed in on, on this ordinance, or since it will apply to, to any other governmental organizations as well?
Well, you mean like schools and other...
Like schools or, or parks or park boards or...
Again, the fact that it's coming along at all is, is more joyful than the restrictions to them. We also know, quite frankly, that certain governmental entities have stepped into this area, even though the code really wasn't ready for it. And the two conversations I had were with, with two governmental entities within the village, was that they're fully prepared to, at this time, recognize and live by, and I believe our intent would be to enforce, so that it is regulated across the board now.
Thank you very much.
So this will be back before the board, April 15th.
That's correct, and then therefore this would conclude my report at this time.
Thank you. Next item is a matter before, a matter from the Plan Commission. Chairman Paul Luke with Peter Pyer.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. I have one case tonight, that's case 2019-01P. And it's at the February 21st meeting of the Plan Commission, we listened to a request to amend an existing site plan approval for a two-lot planned development in a TX transit mixed-use zoning district in an R1 single-family zoning district to reduce the size of a previously approved mixed-use residential and commercial building with enclosed and surface parking, existing religious assembly building with surface parking and stormwater detention. This project was initially approved in January of 2018 for a 24-unit residential building with ground floor commercial and a lower-level parking garage. After working on the marketing and cost analysis, a decision was made to downsize the number of units from 24 to 15, as well as eliminating the underground parking. All of the required parking is on the ground floor and outside. The smaller building is further away from the west-side neighbor and closer to the church, to Church Street, and the outdoor plaza has moved to the southwest corner of the site. Staff confirmed that the overall dimensions of the building are smaller, with cantilevers on the west and north sides. The curb cuts on Church Street will be removed as well. The surface parking includes the required seven spaces reserved for the synagogue, as well as parking for the retail spaces and residential guests. The residential parking spaces are in the garage. Commissioner asked about the size of the new retail space, landscaping changes, and parking arrangements with the adjoining synagogue, commercial parking requirements, if the retail tenant was known, and a condition about monitoring the intersection of the east-west alley with Crawford Avenue for accidents or traffic delays. Staff also clarified that any commercial use can occupy the ground floor space as long as it is allowed in a zoning district without restriction. The petitioner clarified that the PIN number for the retail portion is not going to be tied to the condo association. There were testimony from neighbors that included a question about the number of commercial units planned, why a four-story building was approved when all, all the surrounding buildings are only two stories, and if IDOT was allowed, will allow parking on Crawford Avenue. There was also concerns about the previous demolition of the building that was there, and most of these concerns were, were addressed at the meeting, and hopefully they, they were happily, had a happy ending. The Appearance Commission met February 13th, and at that meeting, they approved a new mixed-use building subject to, subject to providing a horizontal element to the terrace parapet walls to complement guardrails of the residential portions above, which will, will reduce the height of the bricks, of the, of the brick sign band. The Plan Commission, on, on the vote of six ayes, no nays, and three members absent, approved the request.
Thank you. A motion on Plan Commission Case 2019-1P, Site Plan Approval, is in order. Trustee Sutker, seconded by Trustee Ulrich. Are there any comments or questions?
The architect for the project is in the audience.
Yes, I see Rafi. Good evening, Rafi, in the midst of a large crowd.
Question.
Yes, trustee.
Can you explain to me, the retail space, it's a condo building, so who owns the retail space? Is that being sold as a separate condo unit? How does that work?
Uh, I don't think that's, it'll be separate.
So does that mean someone buys that?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the retail space is here, and this is the corner of Crawford and Church. So even though it shows us one, it could be divided. It doesn't have to be one space, it could be smaller. And it, that, that's why the question came up, is it a separate pin? It's not included as the rest of the building, it can be sold out.
And then, is it limited, what it can be, because of what the parking availability is?
Well, probably will depend on the usage, of who goes in there.
To your question, the, the parking is based on one space for every 300 square feet, and that's the general retail requirement. So it would be limited, we could not have a, a fast-food restaurant in there, or some with a higher parking requirement, such as a medical use.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Sutker.
Paul, you said that everybody left happy. How did you address some of the concerns of the residents?
They, they talked with the architect and, and people from the project. Some of the items, you know, we signed within purview of the Plan Commission, especially with the IDOT parking. So I think, for the most part, they, they were, I talked to a couple of, of the residents, and they said that, basically, they wanted to ask a question, they got their answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Roberts?
More specifically, there was a, one, couple, the Keys or the Coasts from Keystone, was that resolved about, they claimed that there might have been some damage from the demolition? Do you know what the outcome?
No, they, they were gonna, they were, the contractor was there, and they're, they're gonna meet and determine if there are any structural damage to their house caused by their demolition and construction. So again, they, I, I haven't heard anything of you.
At, at one point, they did come in and talk to the Building Department about how construction would occur and what was being built on the site. And at the meeting, we offered that prior to construction starting, they should meet with Rafi and the contractors, go through their building, note the conditions, so if there's any damage, that it can be documented.
And could you, real quickly, just show me where the plaza is? Because I, I like the idea, was that in the prior plan, or was it changed to put, kind of, I like the idea of putting space on that side to give the neighbors to the west a little bit more space between that and the building, so I appreciated that. So what, what's the pla, is that like a area patio where people can sit, or...
Rafi? Good evening. It's, it's landscaped, there are a couple of benches, our bike parking is in that area, and it really creates a buffer between the building and the neighbors, and just the whole building generally got pushed away from the neighbor where it used to be right up against that wall.
Great, thank you, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Ulrich?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Van Duzen?
Aye, the motion passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. The concluding item to our massive audience this evening is, is there anybody who wishes to address the Village Board? Apparently not.
Motion to adjourn.
I was sure Vicki was gonna get it.
I was sure, Vicki, it was all on you.